It's five o'clock. It's time to call a meeting to order. Sandy, would you call? Roll call, please.
Councilperson Rooney? Rooney? Harry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Here.
Thank you. I would like to have a motion to suspend the Roberts rules of order. We are going to address that this Thursday at our meeting.
I would like such a motion.
There's second to that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded, too. Not use the Roberts rules of order this evening during our meeting. Would you call for a vote? Suspend this.
Councilperson Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Motion, Harry?
Item number two is, do any of the council members have any conflict of interest on any of the items on the agenda this evening?
No.
Okay. So move on to item number three, consent agenda. A, approval of the agenda. B, approval of the minutes of the June 10th, 2014 council meeting. C, the fiscal year-end claims. D, consideration of 2014, 2015 cigarette permits, annual renewal. E, consideration of approving Sac County Fair's application for a noise pollution permit. F, Class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales for Sac Country Club Inc. doing business as Sac Country Club. G, renewal for Denise Lake doing business as Gifted, Class B native wine permit with living quarters and Sunday sales. And H, receipts and disbursements. Curtis?
Curtis Blaze, is there a list of stores that are getting their cigarette permits renewed?
Yeah.
Could you share those with us?
Casey's, and I'm just going to use the general term.
That's fine, thank you.
Casey, Sac Liquor, Dollar General, DFW, The Place on State, Food Pride, and Crossroads.
Thank you.
Any other question or discussion?
In the claims, the, um...
Claims?
That was, I think that was last month. There was the minutes. I would move an option.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve consent agenda, A through H. Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Motion, Harry.
Thank you. Item number four is projects. A is Sac City Airport Equipment Improvement Project. Number one is consideration of approving final grant agreement with the FAA.
You might remember there were some modifications that were being worked out over a couple of minor changes to the overall project. They've been finalized, and so what you see before you is a standard agreement with the FAA, accepting the grant for purposes of use towards purchasing the snow removal equipment at the airport. There's a 40-page addendum to it I didn't add. Some people claim I cut down too many trees.
I see.
And this has been gone through the airport commission and all that?
Yeah. I make a motion to approve the final grant agreement with the FAA.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the final grant agreement with the FAA for the city airport equipment improvement project. Would you call for a vote?
Councilperson McGinty?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Motion, Harry.
Thank you. Item number five, the citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda.
May I address the council?
Yes.
I'm addressing the council concerning what is currently known as the Shaq's chat. It was. Map, shoe store, location. And with conversation recently with several people in the community, we hope that we have come up with a win-win situation for the city, and I'd like to address what it might be. We are hoping that the city would give permission to a group of people to improve the property by putting a concrete walk path through there with little flower parks or flower beds around it that would attract butterflies and that type of thing. And I talked with the conservation center, and they would like to see the possibility of us having them put information concerning our butterflies or bees or whatever they might be dealing with at the conservation center. They are currently not even able to stay open on weekends because of lack of people going there. And their hope is that maybe if there are people going through this facility, we could direct some of the attention out to the conservation center and promote some additional visitations for people that may not know where it is or how to get there by having some signage down there and to highlight projects that they may be on. I know in conversation with several people, at least some of them are in the room, the conversation seems to be, well, who's going to take care of it? And if we made it as maintenance-free as possible, we look at this as a temporary sort of thing so that it can stay the ownership of the city, and if the city has an opportunity for a retail space to go in there, all we have lost is a concrete walkway. The plants are just plants, and if you were able to encourage a retail store to go in there somewhere down the line, or God forbid, we have a fire and other buildings are lost that are adjacent to it, which would open up more space, having the ownership maintained by the city, you could entice a bigger opportunity without having to deal with a private situation of an LLC or whatever. And there was hesitation to purchase it privately because, frankly, that hasn't worked out real well for Ross and I to have purchased a project or a property for the benefit of the city. And others are saying that they're not sure they want to get into that situation. However, as a win-win situation, if we, even if it's temporary, and it could be very temporary, it could be wrought iron fences to create a an entry to the front, a concrete stamped path through and a wrought iron fence be at the back to divide it from the Gary's Garage with a gate opening that would lead it out to the rest of the alley to get over to the post office or that part of town. And we would like to maybe consider, this is sort of off the cuff, but the pocket parks aren't really being utilized that are on the corners, and there are benches there. And if we could move the benches down to this facility and maybe entertain the idea of putting bike racks in there so that individuals that are riding their bikes as families could park their bikes, secure them, and visit downtown locations and buy a sandwich or, you know, whatever, that we could reestablish the use of the existing pocket parks to promote additional traffic downtown by the people that are riding bikes. And Lakeview had 200 people at their bike rally this last weekend, and we were here, and I didn't see them traveling here. And I think we don't encourage them to because we do not give them secure places to lock up $1,000 bikes. And I just think if we can work collectively with the county and with other people within the county and other cities within the county, we can promote Sac City in a very positive way. And this would be at least a temporary lipstick on downtown, if you will, to make it more presentable, even if it's only for two years, and you guys, you guys, the council is able to bring someone in that wants to build a building in there. We really haven't done anything that would deter someone else putting in a building, and all we would do is say, good.
I have a couple of questions. What, if there's a concrete path and you have little places where there are flower beds, what's going to deter the weeds around that?
Okay, here we're going, we're going back all of a sudden to who's going to maintain it?
No, I just, what's going to deter the weeds?
Well, you put down... Okay, I have planted a lot of flowers in my day, and I understand that there are going to be AB weeds, but you can put down matting, and you can put down mulch that will deter weeds coming up. And I bet if we talk to some individuals like Ross and I, for instance, the pocket park at the corner of Sixth and Main looked like absolute crap. There's weeds from the winter in it, there is debris from the snow being removed in it, and an individual came into my building and said, it's too bad somebody doesn't clean that up. So an employee and I went out and cleaned it up, put two more pots of flowers out there, and we're standing out there, and a city gentleman was out there to spray off for the parking area for new lines. And I just asked, could you just take two seconds with your leaf blower, which is a high-test leaf blower, and blow this out for me?
Sure.
No problem. So when we talk about maintenance, that took him maybe 30 seconds, and it would have taken me 10 minutes to... So my point is, I'm not going to, I guess I'm not really going to address it because I think that is the smallest, most minute element of improving this community, is who's going to take care of the weeds.
No, I didn't even ask that. I asked, when you explained it, you said you'd have a concrete path and a wrought iron fence and some areas of flower beds. What I asked was, what kind of a surface are you going to put where the flower beds aren't? And I think you answered me with, we're going to put down black stuff and something on top of it.
No, 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 where the flower beds aren't.
Right, because it sounded like...
That's going to be concrete bar.
Okay, so the all-around edges is concrete.
Did you get the fixtures I sent from Jefferson?
No, I didn't. And then, this is the first...
Okay, so in Jefferson, they've done the very same thing. And it was an alley, so it's the width of an alley. And they have put a hard surface in there, various ones, actually, it's sort of whatever they have, I would guess. And then they have flower carts, and then they have a bench, and they have a little house that looks like a birdhouse, and it has books in it that says, please read me, and it's very welcoming. And they have benches there for people to sit, and they have information about Iowa birds, and it's very, and it's very calming, it's very neat, and they've got poems about Iowa birds that were written by Iowans that are just there. And so the entire surface bar, it is cement.
Okay, I didn't understand that.
Okay, and it would, we would grade it so that it would not flow to the buildings on the adjacent property, because that would not be very nice. And the other water that would be there, we would try to flow it towards the flower bed so that the least amount of runoff would affect any of the buildings, and you could water the plants with rainwater and that sort of thing. One of the considerations the city might have, you know, think about is a couple outlets down there so that if there were an opportunity to bring an event in there on a Saturday morning or whatever, and actually need electricity, that would be pre-planned, and we could have outlets. And I did notice that there's outlets, at least in the bump out by our building. And so the people that have been talking about this are very willing to divide the plants that they have in their yard, so there's no huge expense on plants. I've got dillies that need to be divided, that I can do that. Other people have other flowers that can go in there and will do perennials that don't need to be replaced on an annual basis. And as I said, you know, it still leaves the opportunity then for the community, when the opportunity presents itself to you to put a retail space in there, go for it, put it in, and great. But in the meantime, we don't have that eyesore. Look at there.
So the plants, I understand, would be minimal cost. The fencing, the concrete, where would you envision that money coming?
Well, one of the bankers in town said that he would consider helping with that, but his position is there are times when the city needs to step up.
I understand that, but I believe when we started, you said this would be something that would be very little cost to the city, so I mean, I'm just, I'm just wondering...
Overall cost, yeah, I would say it was probably going to be a lot less than bringing it down, obviously. But my point was, it would be extended, long-term maintenance cost. It isn't going to be an annual expense to the city. And you know, I've done this before. We've talked to John at American Concrete, and he's been wonderful about helping get the poles set for the Freedom Rock and stuff, and I'm not saying that it will not be without effort. But the people that we are, that I'm talking about are more willing to put effort and time in, if it comes back to the citizens doing this, to fundraising and getting it done than to buying it and it becoming a responsibility for them down the road. I mean, it's like, it's like us. I mean, there's no opportunity for us to sell our property. We bought it with the intent of helping the city, but it is costing us, there's no revenue coming in, except for the people that are getting gas and... Anyway, that's totally another issue, and I'm still pleased that we did it. But it sort of has put a sour taste in some people's mouths to do it again.
Do you think it would be realistic to ask you that you come with that plan, whatever plan it is, just to show what the plan is to do with it? I mean, I'm sorry, I did not get the email with whatever Jefferson has.
But I think we also need an approximate cost to the project, and if you can get some donations or whatever, because we have to divide it up amongst what the city and the public have. It seems to me that every time we get into something, it ends up costing more than what it's really purported to be, so I think if we had a plan, that's something we might consider. Until we see something in plan, just talking about it, it's pretty much...
It's hard to just say yes to something you don't really know. You know what I mean?
Well, we can't say yes tonight anyway.
And I knew that, but there has to...
What is the size of that property? Do we know?
Not off the top of my head. If I had the paperwork from the last council meeting, I could tell you, but not off the top of my head. I know it's relatively narrow. It, because on the next council meeting, you have a public hearing.
Right.
So that'd be a proper time to probably have the discussion.
I mean, it's, I mean, I would love to, I would love to see it become something other than a little weed patch.
Me too. We all would, I think.
We would all love to see that. It would be nice also to see it in some meaningful way back on the tax roll. And I know with that, you know, finding someone to build in this relatively modest property is going to be a challenge at best. I fully understand that. And the pocket parks, they're neat. My understanding is that the chamber is the one who is to maintain those?
Actually...
Nobody knows that for sure, do you think?
No, because that was approved by a chamber that no longer really exists. The people that have, and that's like in perpetuity. I mean, forever, you're going to expect the chamber to take care of the pocket parks?
Well, okay, I guess what I'm saying is, if, you know, I don't want to get into the same situation, okay, this is someone who's taking... I mean, I know maintenance, I know you're saying it's a minimal issue, but I don't, but the pocket parks were put there, at least my understanding, as a chamber effort to promote the very things that we're talking about, which are great things, don't get me wrong. And now suddenly, we're, I mean, they, I don't want to put the city in a position where, okay, it's there, and now it suddenly is back. It would need to be something, if there had been something clearly in writing with the chamber, and my understanding was that there was, but maybe I'm totally off base on that.
Or I don't think it's, I don't think it's wrong to say, we're going to do this, here's our plan, and here's what we, here's our expectations of the city. Can you accept that or can't? We expect them to, if it's a dry summer, we expect them to bring some water and water so the plants don't die. Or change the light bulbs in the streets so that's setting the bill to the chamber. You know, I think, I think...
Could you elaborate on that, please?
The bump outs in North Fifth, we received a bill for the light, changing the light bulbs. Who did? The Chamber.
Those are Christmas lights.
I think it's different.
If you could bring a copy of the bill, that would be most welcome. I'd love to see it.
No, I'm not going to, because, no, I'm not. You can research that yourself and go up and get a copy.
Well, if you're going to sit here and allege something, please support it.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to be difficult, but I don't, but I don't, but if we're going to make hotshots, please have the information there to support it.
I didn't realize that we were going to get into the conversation about whose responsibility the pocket parks are.
Well, you were the one that brought it up. I'm sorry, Denise.
Well, let's go back to the original thing. How do you want to move forward? Let's make, let's address it and do something positive about it. If we're going to move forward, let's come up with what we're, and what our expectations are. This kind of conversation gets us absolutely nowhere. So let's go back to the point.
I think a drawn-out plan with an approximate cost would be a good start.
If I have, now, I need to understand, you want the whole surface covered with cement. Is that right?
The surface that is not containing flowers.
Okay.
So tonight, I will resend the information from Jefferson to you. And you can take a look at what they have done and see the positive impact that it's made in their downtown off of their square. And they've done it with two alleys. They closed alleys. It wasn't vacant buildings. It was two alleys that they closed.
Well, I'm not arguing the point. I'm just...
I'm not either. I'm telling you, I was sending, are there other emails that you would like me to send that?
No, what I wanted to do would be to contact the concrete company and say, what would be the approximate cost to do this? And unless I know where the concrete is going to be, I can't do that. So I, are you going to have four flower beds, and approximately how big are they going to be? Because I'm serious about checking it out.
And as, this was just an introductory conversation with the council to see if you would even entertain the idea of holding on to the property with it still being improved, with the option, which looks like a win-win from our side of the table, that you can still sell it down the road and put retail in there, but in the meantime, those of us that are downtown affected by it don't have to look at it.
Well, I feel like we've gotten into a confrontational manner, and it didn't mean, it didn't start that way, and I don't want it to end that way. I believe that the council is willing to take a look at it, and I believe we're positive about it, and we will. But I don't, I don't want to leave on an argumentative voice, because that's not what we want.
And I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just saying that, I mean, I think it would be great. We would all love to see it improved. And I guess, I'm with everybody else. I would like, we would need to see some numbers. And we can create some numbers if we have something that matches your vision, or we could get someone else to perhaps design it. I mean, so that we would have something to work from.
Sure.
I think that would be great. Appreciate your input.
Is there anything else? Okay, we move on to item numbers. Thank you, Denise and Ross. Item number six, continuing business. A, blue space creative.
I really don't have anything further to add this time. I haven't received. I did request an advanced copy of information, and they told me it wasn't ready yet, so...
Okay, B, Chautauqua Park Improvement Update. It's under water.
It's flooded.
We're putting in a vote on this one of our improvements.
We will not probably be able to hold Chautauqua events there. Even if it dries up, it'll be muddy, and the grass will be dead, and it won't be conducive to that. So we are planning to move it to the community center, the bounce houses, and the dunk tank out front and the meal. Because it is conducive to people coming and going, and it will be covered in case it rains, and then we don't have to have another plan. So I just thought I'd share that with you. C, Urban Development Area Update.
I know Bruce and I spent just a little bit of time talking. We were trying to get an update and zoning information from the county. We received that earlier this week. So that gives us a little bit more information. I have not, I still don't have a full response from the league on that, on the legal side. It changes a little.
Item number seven, miscellaneous. A, Crystal Hanram to address the council regarding sidewalk regulations. Crystal?
Hi.
Thank you, Mr. Hanram.
Hello.
How are you tonight?
Huh?
How are you tonight?
Hotter than a frog's hair. I just like,
Forgiveness.
Forgiveness in the council for, in regards to my sidewalk. I came in earlier and talked to Adam about it earlier, well, last week, I guess it was. He said, it's not that I don't have the best of intentions in eventually going to put a sidewalk in, but as of right now, I keep getting these letters of 30 days, 30 days. And I just, we don't, I have a husband that's gone every other week, and I have, well, we've got a sidewalk that's four times, you know, as long as anybody else's, because that's how big our lot is. So Adam asked if I could give him a date, and which I probably could. I could say anything, you know, I could say by September, and then if my kid breaks his leg, you know, and I have a $10,000 bill because we don't live off the county or any of the government, then I'm going to have issues. And then Adam said, well, if we have a date, and then we don't, you know, you don't meet that, then we can start court proceedings against you, and I just assumed not hand you the news to hang me with, so. So I, I'd just like forgiveness. We do have every intention of putting one in. Adam said the only time he's ever seen the council approve the forgiveness is if there isn't a sidewalk on either adjacent property, and there's not, so. I guess that's mine.
So your sidewalk wouldn't have joined anybody's sidewalk. It would be just your sidewalk?
One sidewalk.
No, it would be both sides, but we would go to my mother's property, so. But as of right now, no, that does not come up to the property line. It stops at the driveway. And then there's like, I would, any of you can go up and measure it. There's probably another 10 feet. There's a survey stick there. We had it surveyed earlier, so we would go the rest of the way, but no, I wouldn't have just a sidewalk with no ends to it.
So is your, you know, your mother's ends at the driveway, and then how many feet is it between the driveway and your edge of the property where the sidewalk would come?
I would guess 10.
Okay.
So.
Does she have an intention of completing that?
No.
Okay.
Well, I mean, there's no reason for it to now, because there's no...
But she would complete it if yours is completed.
I would complete it for her.
Okay.
So it doesn't look stupid.
Sure.
So. That's...
What are your questions, councilmembers?
So you'd like more time, is that?
Well, there's actually no time in the... There's no time limit saying from the time you build. You know, I just keep getting these letters from the city saying you have until July 4th or 3rd, or June 6th, or whatever it is to put a sidewalk in. Well, if you go to a contractor or a cement guy and say, here, the city said I have this long, they're going to laugh in your face and make sure it doesn't happen, so. Yeah, that, no, do I want more time? No, I don't want... So, um, yeah, that, no, do I want more time? No, I don't want more time. I want forgiveness so I can do my project on my itinerary, not the city's.
Well, you asked me a question.
Yes.
I know that in the past I have asked the postal service their opinion on this matter. And their opinion is, is that the city ought to enforce, require everyone to have a sidewalk, not just new construction.
Right.
And they look at that from the perspective of blocking routes. It provides a better opportunity for them. One of the things that Crystal and I talked about is, is that the practice beyond the ordinance has been, and we do this in many of our P and Z related issues over the years, has been that if an individual provides us a reasonable time period in order to comply with the code. I mean, for instance, we sent you a notice in November going into the winter. There's some expectations up here. You're not gonna pour concrete in the middle of winter. So, one of the, one of the reasonability factors that's always been built into our application of the ordinance has been that if they give us a written agreement on resolving it within a reasonable time, that we accept that. Up till now, our reasonability has been limited at 12 months. And when Crystal and I had spoke, she had mentioned maybe as much as a three year, I believe three year was the time.
Well, and I was being sarcastic because she said, well, could you give me a date? And I said, well, yeah, I think three years, 17 years, you know, whatever.
So, from the perspective of the ordinance, what I told Crystal at that time, as I said, whether you want forgiveness or you want a longer period than 12 months, it's really outside the scope of the ordinance for us to provide anything. You know, the expanding either our common current practice of implying the ordinance or actually complying with the ordinance altogether. The, so-
So, what are you asking her?
So, how long has your house been built? I know time flies when you're having fun. Was it built in 2012?
No. No, it was last year. It was 13, yeah.
As I say, time flies when you're having fun and I know that, you see it going at, you see it going at in that sense.
What are you anticipating, Crystal? Really? Have you got any thoughts about what your plans are? I mean, are you thinking about doing a portion of it this summer? Are you thinking about doing it next summer? Do you have any ideas? I mean?
Um, with, I'd love to do it next week. But, I mean, when you, I'm sure all of you or a portion of you are familiar with what happened. I mean, they dropped our house. So, and then they only had insurance for, you know, $100,000. So, it cost us an additional $40,000 when we bought another new house. So, when your funds are limited and you go to the bank and, you know, they're not, the bank's not gonna loan you so much money. And I can't really walk up to Richie Allen and say, hey, the city wants a sidewalk. I can't pay for it, but they sure would like one, you know? And it's just, would I like to do it this fall? Yeah, I would. Can I say, yeah, I'll have it done this fall? And know right in my heart that, yep, that is what it's gonna happen. I hope it does, but, you know, things happen. We all know that things happen. And so, and Adam told me that, you know, the only time it's ever been-
Yeah, I believe that-
Forgiven.
Right. It's in that scenario and that's-
The one scenario where there's been mixed results when presented to the council, where there's not a clear precedent, has been in the indication where it would not connect on either side. I know in two cases since I've been here, you've forgiven people when there was no sidewalk on either side of them. And I know there was at least one case where you didn't forgive it. So, there has been consistency as far as application of the ordinance goes. But there has been, so the council has in the past gone both ways on this issue.
I mean, if we were to suggest something like September 30th of 2016, would that be a possible?
Boy, I don't think it's possible.
I mean, I'm just, you know, trying to work with-
I could sell my house by then. I mean, anything's possible. It's just, I, can we just skip all of the hypotheticals? And can I just get what I'm asking for is the question?
But the letter's not to come and you put it in when you're able to put it in, is that what you're saying? Is that, is that what you're asking seriously? Are you asking for the, you know, you don't want to get a letter every 30 days that the-
Right, yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to be like disobedient towards the city or whatever. You know, I also informed Adam. I said, I'd like to take pride in our town also. I said, I told him, I said, I just went and paid $3,000 worth of back taxes on properties. So, I don't have to look at some of the dumps across the street. So, if I do end up with them, I can tear them down. Doing you guys a favor too, aren't I? That way you don't have to worry about them. You know, but it's just, yeah, no, I have every intention of putting a sidewalk in. I just-
Can't do it now.
Right, and don't want to deal with, I don't even want to get into the, oh, well, we said by 2016 and now I've got a kid in college. Do I think it would take that long? No, I don't. But do you get my point?
I guess, I guess, the only reason I was asking, I personally would like to see sidewalks in front of all properties.
Me too.
And, and, not that I don't trust people to do what, I'm sure, I'm sure you would. But I guess I personally would hate to see a total bypassing of that part of the ordinance. I mean, that's why I was asking if there were a time, if there were a timeframe that we could work on together that would say, all right, this is reasonable for you, but yet it doesn't mean that we're totally saying we don't expect a sidewalk.
Right.
That was why I shot, that was why I shot out 2016. I mean, with Adam. So, the current, current established practice is a year. Is that correct?
Usually the courts will recognize reasonable period as a year.
As a year. So, if we go beyond a year, then we're essentially expanding the practice and setting a precedent. And here's the thing, if we do set a precedent of, let's say, going two or three years or whatever, then anyone else that comes in can say, well, in this instance, you did this. And, oh, you've, you completely waived the need for a sidewalk when there is in fact sidewalks on either side. If we, if we go ahead and make a precedent of no sidewalk at all, and we're not, I don't think, talking about that. But if we go with a two-year extension, that really establishes a precedent of two years. And I think the longer we establish that precedent, let's say, two years or three years or whatever it might be, then that's gonna be the standard going forward. And do, you know, then if you extend it that much, now we're two or three years out. Well, now you're kind of grandfathered in of really not having one. So, when does the time become, you know, enforcement, whatever? I, I would like to see it stayed, kept within our accepted precedent of this time. Not because I really wouldn't like to give you, and I'd love to make an exception for you and say, oh, yeah, we trust that you'll do it and have it seen, done, you know, in a year or two, five. But on the other hand, sitting here, you know, with all the other people out there that really would like to see, you know, sidewalks, I just don't want to see a precedent set of being real loose on this. And, and the looser we get, the easier it is gonna become not to enforce it. So, I would like to see it kept at a year.
My question is, what happens to Crystal if she absolutely can't do it within that year's time? What are we gonna do to her?
The courts, or the ordinance is clear that the city can act upon compliance. In other words, we could go in and do the work and assess the, the-
Have we ever done that?
Uh, not in the time I've been here. Has it happened prior to that, Sandy?
This is a little bit of a unique case in that there aren't, the sidewalks are not quite contiguous on either side. So, that's one place where we have been-
Unclear.
Unclear in the past. So- But it's been contiguous or not contiguous on both sides, is-
It is not. It's not on this case.
Right, but in our case, the exception that we made in the past was when it was not contiguous on either side or on both sides.
Well, it isn't.
It isn't. Right, it's not contiguous on both sides in this case. But in the cases that we- Or either side. Because her mother's property, in driving by there, there's a driveway here, but the property line is like 10 feet here. Their property begins here. And there's no sidewalk here. There's no sidewalk here. The sidewalk is only up to the driveway as on the one side.
And on the other side, there is a yard?
There's a yard. There's no sidewalk here.
There's no sidewalk all the way to the museum.
There's no sidewalk here and there's no sidewalk with this 10-foot chalk. Is that? Okay. So, I mean, so we're already in an, in an area where we've been, where the council has historically been wishy-washy, shall we say, for lack of a better term?
Do any of the council members that haven't spoken, you have questions or any recommendations or any thoughts?
I agree with Bill. I think we should have, unfortunately, and nothing against anybody in the, but I think we should, you know, have our rules and try to enforce them without setting a precedent and grandfathering someone in. I know it sounds really, really silly in a way to have a sidewalk was moving in between it, but we did pass an ordinance that any new constructions required to have a sidewalk in front of it. But which one do we follow? That's, that's what we have to determine, I guess.
Is anybody ready to make a recommendation or is there any other comments?
Economic terms are tough. I mean, I know that. And it's, you know, and you had certain extenuating circumstances with your house being dropped. I mean, I know, you might have the only house in town that was dropped, you know, but-
I think so.
Outside of Wizard of Oz, that doesn't happen too often. You know, but, I mean, that, what, but I would, I guess I would be real hesitant to say, you know, just forgive the requirement for a sidewalk in front of it. I mean, if, I would like to find some way to kind of work with you in a timely manner that isn't totally unreasonable for you nor unreasonable for us.
Crystal, do you think it's reasonable to think you may be able to get it? I mean, they're talking about a year. It would be a year from July 1st. Do you think it's reasonable to think that you may be able to have it done by fall of 2015? That would give you-
Like I said, I'd like to. I just, yeah, like I said, I would like to do it. I have every intention of doing it. I just, like I said to Adam, you guys, I don't want to hand you the news to hang me with when it comes to court and maybe kick myself in the ass later, you know? And when you guys can all sit here and look at me and say, well, we have forgiven it in the past, you know, but sorry, not for you. You know, we've forgiven it in the past in the same exact scenario that you have. You know, but I guess we can't for you. And I, like, it's entirely up to the council. And I agree with Tom. Ordinances are set for a reason. Phil Hazner told me personally that the reason he stepped down from his position of being the zoning officer, whatever he was, was because people aren't treated fairly. And it seems that if a council person or somebody has some sort of personal vendetta against somebody in the city, then he said, we go after them more. But if somebody's a friend, then we'll kind of lay off of them. And Phil, you can ask him, you can tell him I said so, because he said it directly to me. He said, I've been a law enforcement officer for 30 years. My integrity is based off of, you know, his, his job. He said, I don't have a problem enforcing the law, but I'm gonna do it straight across the board. So, you, I mean, it's, like I said, it's entirely up to you guys. I'm at your mercy. But if you can forgive one and not another, then-
I'd actually like to look at it. You know, just, you know, I was not, when I was talking, I was not aware that one side was completely-
I'll tell you what.
Boy.
I don't think we need to happen on anything. We have a year. You, you know, there's a year ahead of us.
Well, right now, there's nothing in writing. So, when her term is up roughly in mid-July, she would be in violation of the code. She has not provided any written information to extend us beyond that period at this point.
Can we table this discussion until next meeting?
That's what I, that's what I would propose.
Done, acceptable with you?
Do you want that in the, going with the motion standing, the table?
No, because this wasn't, anything you can act on anyways.
Okay.
Let's see, next month? Next week?
July 8th.
Two weeks.
Okay.
July 8th.
All right, that it?
Yeah.
Yep, thanks, Crystal.
Seven miscellaneous cases, third reading of-
Yeah, could I make one last comment here?
Sure.
I, I think, you know, this whole discussion just underscores the need for consistency from one time to another. You make one exception, no matter what it is, I don't care if it's sidewalks or anything. Once you make one exception, you and she spelled it out perfectly. Then you open up yourself for unequal treatment. And then you're put in that difficult position where, and if it's black and white, then it makes it so much easier for enforcement. So, with that, and I think she pointed out the perfect example of what we, how we need to be consistent.
I think we all need to look at the ordinance and see how it reads about connecting sidewalks. Because there is something in there. If that's how it reads-
It says nothing about connecting. It simply says if you build a house, you have to put a sidewalk on that property.
Okay, then how, I remember the instance when we were talking about the sidewalks. How could we go ahead or how could you go ahead and forgive it when nothing in the ordinance said it had to be joining anything? And you forgave it before or let him get away with not putting one in?
The council has the authority to disregard their own ordinances.
My point is to maintain the ordinance. Unfortunately, the reason why it should be.
Okay, well, we've tabled it till next time. So, I'd say everybody go to the ordinance and read it and, Curtis?
I just want to check my own memory. Those instances where you forgave them, were they already existing houses where a sidewalk was torn out and then you forgave putting it back in because?
One of them was that case. I think the other one was, I think they both were. To be all honest, Curtis?
Neither of them were new?
I know one of them was just to tear out the sidewalk and not want to put it back in.
Because it wasn't adjoining anything?
Because it wasn't adjoining anything. I don't remember.
The other one was new construction. And there was no, no sidewalk there and there's none down the whole street. And that's why they decided, you know, not just to put one and have nothing anywhere.
They ripped it out because it was in bad shape? And they just came and asked if they had-
And then that person did say, though, if there would ever be a sidewalk, they would be more than happy to put any, if anyone did join. And that would have been on the pilot.
Thank you for that clarification.
Pardon me?
Thank you for that clarification.
Seven miscellaneous B is third reading of ordinance number 2014-256 entitled, An Ordinance Aiding the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sac, City of Iowa by- Can I stop and go back just a second? I got, I've been thinking about this. When that comes up, why do we even go there then? If the, if the ordinance reads this, why do we even deliberate it? If you don't want to make any exceptions to the rule, then we follow the ordinance and why do we go through this? Would we have to go through this? Because if you read the ordinance and it says this and the person comes forward and says, you know, what can I do about this, say, this is how the ordinance reads and to this point, we make no exceptions.
I think people have to have the opportunity to ask the council. I think they have to have the opportunity to ask the council. We also have the opportunity to respond by saying yes or no.
Unfortunately, we have that situation in many things, whether it be that or forgiveness of sewer rates or swimming pool passes or there are so many things that happen.
There's been many things over the years. I mean, we've all seen over the years. Gary's probably seen it along with the rest of us. If anyone has an issue with any ordinance or any policy, they've always been welcome to come and challenge that deposition and such.
But it seems like this is pretty cut and dry. It's just one, it's pretty cut and dry. I mean, they're really-
You mean, it's what it is.
Yeah, they're, the ordinance is pretty cut and dry.
The saddest thing to me is that there are people saying that you get special treatment for having someone who's a friend on the council. That one, that one to me is not, is not something that- That one, to me, is not, is not something that should be taken lightly, because that really does address the integrity of the city government.
Right.
That, I mean, I, I think we've had a couple of instances tonight of people who were very clearly questioning the integrity of this body. I don't think that's something we should have to necessarily be quiet about. I mean, because I think, I think it's all right to say, could you give me an example of what Phil was talking about, or can you give me an example? I mean, rather than making the accusation, can you give me the facts? I don't think that that, I think that's something that we shouldn't apologize for.
I have to agree.
And, you know, and if nothing else, putting it off, it sends a message, at least we're willing to deliberate and think about it and, and weigh the, it's easy to force, enforce a cut and dry thing, where when it really becomes difficult is when any reasonable person would say, look at something and say, gee, it's kind of obvious that you wouldn't put something there. So, you've got one on the, it's, it's so much easier to be black and white, it's these gray areas that, that get you. And on the other hand, I'm, I said earlier about, you know, when you start making exceptions, I really, really hate to make exceptions because it just creates the situations like these. So, I don't, I don't think it hurts for us to think about it for a couple of weeks. This is not something that came up, you know, it's not an urgency type thing. We're not going to really press the issue until we, we meet again and be reasonable. She's had more than 12 months already. I mean, we've given her more than 12 months to start with.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then we'll move to seven miscellaneous B, third reading of ordinance number 2014-256 entitled, "An Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sac City, Iowa," by amending provisions pertaining to the water rates.
I wouldn't make a motion.
Curtis?
Would you remind us what those changes are, please?
What, what, what was that one?
Could you remind us what the, what the changes are?
Can I just go over the main ones? Water deposits would go from 100 to 150 to reflect that they haven't been changed in many, many years. And, let's see, NSF checks would go from 25 to 35. And then if you wanted your services turned back on after getting shut off, the fee for that goes from 25 to 30 during regular hours and 50 to 75 during off hours, and that reflects, you know, that, those numbers have not changed in many, many years. They need to reflect current, current expectations. Those are the primary changes.
Thank you for that review.
Yes, I would make the motion to approve the order commending the code of ordinance of the City of Sac City by amending provisions pertaining to the water rates, ordinance number 2014-256. I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the third reading of ordinance number 2014-256. The ordinance amending the code of ordinance of the City of Sac City, Iowa, by amending provisions to pertaining, provisions pertaining to water rates. Would you call for a vote, please?
Councilperson Brandy?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Seven miscellaneous C, consideration of resolution number 2014-14, a resolution hiring city employees for the fiscal year 2014-15.
I would move adoption of resolution number 2014-14, a resolution setting wages for city employees for the fiscal year 2014-15, for the hiring of... I'll second it.
A motion has been made, seconded to approve, resolution number 2014-14, a resolution hiring city employees for the fiscal year 2014-15.
Would you call for a vote, Sandy? Councilperson Hanson?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Thank you. Please, committee and department head, report. Anybody ready?
I thought it was kind of neat that, I appreciated seeing all the safety information that city employees are brought to in their training.
There was an instance this week that Justin Coates came upon, and I visited with him today, and he said, you know, it only takes one of those to make us realize that all of the rules and regulations and all the training and everything we get is for a reason, a very serious reason. He said it's made all of us really stop and think twice. And he also was out there helping Jason. They had lightning strike their gas line and blow a hole in it, and it was shooting gas out of the ground. They're lucky their house didn't explode. They determined that it actually went through the house and came out the line instead of hit the line and went into the house.
This is only one of two instances of this happening in something in the neighborhood of like 50 years.
Yeah.
It's a very rare occasion to see this.
And the one, the other one was in between here and Litton, and they said there was a shot of gas and fire 50, 60 feet in the air when that happened.
Yeah, that's before they put the reducers in.
So...
They have new safety, yeah. They already lit in there to keep...
They're very lucky.
So, if we had non-metal pipes, would that be as much of an issue?
Well, you trade one set of problems for another set of problems.
Wood melt primer.
That's pretty scary.
But one, one other item, and I'm, department head reports and so on, this actually goes back to, by four or five months ago, Jim Johnston in the Water Department reported mention about the, well, it was after kind of the winter was over, the pipes freezing and whatever, and he'd mentioned in his, as kind of a footnote on his monthly report, let's say, maybe three months ago in March or so, how it would be, how they had difficulty finding all the lines where the shut-off valves for the water and the different utilities, and had mentioned that it would be nice to have new maps drawn of the utility lines that we have for easy access and reading, going on where to shut valves off and would make their work easier. And, you know, of course, without, there's always a cost, and, and Jim and I had talked, and I mentioned this to Adam, and just briefly to Barb, I think, in text, that we might discuss that at one of our next monthly meetings on Thursday morning, certainly.
I was planning to plug it in sometime in the July meeting.
Okay. And then Barb, you had something too, and so I thought we could, whenever it works into the different departments, you know, there's no hard and fast rule that we would have to do that one in July, but if that would work out for everybody, you know, that's a consideration. Let's see, the department had note that I had, I think, I don't believe what was really mentioned, I think this was probably Brandy's last department had note, and I personally, if not as a council, would like to at least extend a resolution of thanks to her for what she has done at the library.
Revolutionize the library.
I mean, it's, nothing against what was there before, was, was good before, but she has really helped the city move it into the 21st century, and I don't know if we can do a resolution of thanks or whatever we can do for that, but I would certainly support something like that.
I'll write a card of thanks. If that's okay with you.
For Thursday morning, I've been, I was hoping to give you a link to the league's access to the webinar today that they have had, that we were wanting to review for procedural matters. We worked probably half the day today trying to get the link to work right, and I never did get it working right. So, what we may end up doing Thursday for our meeting is actually watching the 50-minute presentation that they put on, and, and doing that as, as our, kind of our educational meeting on Thursday so that we can get it done. So, we're good. Might be the easiest way to do it in the end anyway. Oh, and please don't forget, if you're wanting to go to the league, the annual league meeting, I need to put the application for your fee, your admin, your, your attendance fee in the claims for July, which means I'll need to have it probably next week at a minimum.
Should we sign IR? You know that.
Okay. You and Teresa will plan to go down. Gary's planning to go. If the rest of you, just please let me know.
And we will share again.
Okay.
I don't know, maybe we didn't, we didn't.
I'll go ahead and fill out forms for you and Teresa and Gary, and if the other, if the other three of you can let me know, I'll, I'll go ahead and fill those in for next time as well.
I'll go with Turner.
Second?
Sure.
Cover them. Councilperson Perry?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
I'll be missing you all on July 8th.